Impact, which is fantastic. So specifically why he came to mind was last year, another teacher, I'm Michael Alexander, she's now at the middle school. We created a group called the kindness club, didn't we? And it was really a way to build strong peer relationships with some target students and their peers. And Levi quickly rose to the top as a positive peer link because he would always come fully prepared, always got caught up on his work for any time he missed the when he was with our group. And so whether it was sewing hearts for the cardiac unit, we got to deliver them to the University of Iowa, which is super cool, or visiting with the residents at Windmill Manor, which was fun. I would always radiate kindness and respect while maintaining a strong academic excellence while balancing both of those worlds. So he was a pretty big part of why our group was so successful with his behavior. And so I think he is a shining example of what it means to live the Clipper way. And so we're super proud of you. And I can't wait to see what else he does in the world when he grows up. So that is why I chose Levi.
Next, we'll have Matthias Johnson. Matthias is an eighth grade student at the middle school, and he was nominated by Mikel Brown and Brad Fox. And Brad is here too.
All right, so very special young man here. So we have peer to peer in our middle school, which is eighth graders sign up for an elective class where they get to help other kids in the school, some sixth graders, some students with special needs. This young man is one above and beyond. So when we when we asked for nominations, his name came about immediately. I've seen emails from teachers commenting on him and the things he's doing to help make all of our kids feel like they're a really good member of our school. So I'll just read it real quickly. He's an absolutely terrific member of our peer to peer team. He's been great working with other students in our school. He's shown kindness by helping others that just need a little extra help or support. He's a great friend to some of our kiddos that need a friend the most. He's a great leader in our middle school and leads by example. Congratulations.
All right. Our last student of the month is our high school student of the month, Isabella Di Lorenzo.
Yes, don't look at me.
Do you want to come on up?
Super Clipper.
Yeah. And Jesse Di Lorenzo nominated Isabella.
Are you just gonna tell us why you're so awesome?
Yes, I would be so awesome.
What do you where do you sit every morning?
I don't know.
Don't you do every morning by Mr. Parker's room?
Yes, from Parker's room.
What do you do?
I don't know. About.
You sit in the hall and what do you do with all the kids that walk by?
I don't know.
You wave and say hello to so many kids.
And hugging.
And hug them.
And high five.
Yeah, high fives and fist bumps.
Yes, and knockers.
And knockers. Um, it's just, yeah, it's especially hard for me. Peter, Dad.
Can my dad say something?
She just, you know, lights up everybody's day. And kids will come in and they'll be just kids who don't normally smile. But we get to smile.
You don't smile, me. I'm better.
She gets in my room, maybe five minutes at the end of the day, and I have a group of 15 or 20 kids in my room. And she always takes turns going around hugging everybody.
That's great.
And really, you know, it just makes their day.
Awesome.
It's just to have somebody around that makes people happy.
Yes, so much happier.
Right?
Yes, that's right.
Can I stop talking?
Sure, Dad. Go ahead.
Okay.
Wow.
Now we'll have our elementary staff of the month, Maggie Fields. Maggie's a teacher at Oak Hill Elementary. And Maggie was nominated by Kristen Gess. Kristen is unable to attend tonight, so I'll read what she wrote. Maggie takes the time to make sure all the associates working under her are thriving along with the kids in her class. She checks in with other staff members to make sure they are always in the know. She goes out of her way to show kindness and respect towards all. Even in times of high stress, she manages to keep the room flowing smoothly and calmly. She was always on top of things and is ready to jump in at any time. She lends an ear to those who need it. She always keeps a cheery personality even though even through the rough times. She takes the time to check in with everyone. She is blunt in a very respectful way and makes sure you understand what's going on, what she needs from you, and how to do it. In all the honesty, she is one of the best additions to CCA, and I believe she will go far with her amazing work ethic and friendly demeanor. Congratulations. All right, and our middle school staff of the month, Brendan. Do you want to come on up? Brendan is a busy guy. He has a halftime associate position and a halftime elective teacher at the middle school. And he was nominated by Deborah Sage, and Deborah was unable to make it tonight, but I'll read what she said. She said Brendan reaches out to other teachers to see what students are learning so he can design his lesson plans to support that student learning. It is an extension of the classroom. He is creative in how he can incorporate different activities and guide students in developing their critical thinking skills. Brendan is enthusiastic and has a positive attitude. He builds relationships with students, tries to talk with everyone at least once during class, and makes learning fun. His energetic nature and fast smile helps to set up a positive classroom environment. Congratulations. All right, our high school staff of the month is Alyssa Amalon. Alyssa is very, very busy. She's an ag teacher, advisor for FFA, NHS, and job shadows and internships. She were nominated by Laurel Keenan and Mary Lou Graham. I'll read what Laurel wrote first. And both of them cannot attend tonight. Alyssa consistently goes above and beyond through her work in the classroom and advisement of extracurricular activities, including FFA, NHS, and job shadows and internships. She is at school early and stays late to make sure students have all of the support that they need. Through everything that she does, she ensures that it is a strong reflection of her work, her students' work, and CCA School District. Alyssa is an exemplary model of good character and kindness through her ability to support her coworkers in all situations. As a new advisor to a CTSO, Alyssa made sure that I had all of the support I needed to establish a strong program at CCA. She not only supports me, but is always willing to lend a helping hand for everyone who needs assistance. Alyssa models good character to her students and coworkers every single day through her actions and words. While it might be easy to cut corners or give up when frustrated, Alyssa is diligent in her work and ensures that it is always a strong reflection of the CCA Community School District values. CCA is truly fortunate to have role models for students and staff like Alyssa. And then Mary Lou wrote, Alyssa is always invested and dedicated to her students in both the ag and FFA programs, not only during the day, but before and after school, too. Her students are dedicated to the program because of her extra effort and time she puts into her work. She goes above and beyond, and it shows in her students in so many ways. She gives confirmation feedback that is positive and encouraging, and she is respectful towards her students. Congratulations. We're gonna do some pictures of students and staff, and then.
Students together first, and then staff.
Yeah, let's do, what's that?
She wanted students first, like, staff.
So if that can get Levi.
Isabella.
You want to take that one? Come get pictures. You can come get pictures. And then look at me. All right. See how I'm smiling?
Smile, no one.
Oh, but I can see your face.
Sorry.
That's okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You want, did you guys get a chance in your picture?
I don't want more.
Right back here.
Sorry. Bella, you're famous. You guys have loved the picture.
I know.
It's on your face.
Thank you.
Okay, staff.
See, I. I have this face.
Hi.
You guys have, I took a.
I'll go in my car, though. I know, I swear. I know my place.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Well, everyone is more than welcome to stay, but we also understand you may have other things to do that are more engaging. So we will not be offended if there's a mass access at this point. Thank you, everyone. I don't see anything. Next up is community public forum. I don't see anything online. Laura, you had no comments, right? Great. Well, just like we write in the presentations then, and up first, we have Mr. Parker here with us to talk about the CCA Foundation update. Welcome, Mr. Parker.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you for just a few minutes about what we've been doing in the foundation since we last talked, and then a few things that we have planned for this upcoming year. So when we last talked, it was, I think, in April, so like a week before, we had the Night of the Stars. So I'll start there. Night of Stars is a great event for us. We got a lot of feedback on all the levels from people that were there just as a guest, from staff that were award winners, our students that were award winners, almost all the parents of those students. Just a lot of people said that they just really loved the event. And we're, there's a few things we think we can do even better this year. So we're looking forward to having a even new and improved Night of the Stars this coming school year. But we brought in $9,000 for the foundation through our sponsors. So it was a huge revenue stream that we never had before that we now have. So and that's something, again, that we think that we can really scale even bigger from our sponsors moving forward in this upcoming school year. Right after that, we had our second dine out. Dine outs are very, very important to the foundation. We have two a year. This one was our second most successful ever. The one that we had right before that in the fall of last year was our most successful. So we're always trying to add new restaurants. We did that, especially in this spring one where we added Pinseekers. Now we have both Hy-Vee's that are their restaurants that are there that are part of it. We added the New Jersey Mikes that's in North Liberty. Polly Ice Pizza did a great job for us again. But I do want to give a special shout out to Millstream Brathouse. They did two days for us. So it's usually just that Thursday, but they extended it to Thursday and Friday, and they far away were our number one contributor this year. So just very, very grateful for their support of the foundation. Right after that, we had our foundation Masters Golf Tournament. Very successfully, a beautiful day. We sold out all 36 of our team slots. We expanded the sponsors that we have had in the past. So again, something that we're really looking forward to. We also had our, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right through that one. Can I go back? Can you make me go back? There we go. So this year, we added silent auctions to our, all the other things that we raised money through for the golf outing. And we had some really good ones. We had Riverside Casino gave us a overnight stay in their hotel and a dinner in their restaurants. We got a sponsor that donated a four day stay in their Orlando, Florida, the house that they own there. The hotel, Milrite, also gave us an overnight stay and a restaurant voucher there. Two golf courses gave us a four person and golf carts and shields, put together a great package with a Hawkeye golf bag, balls, towels, and everything. So that was a huge fundraiser for us that we have never had before. So this coming year, school year that we're really looking forward to, a few things, we started the season out with our Big Donut Day. We donated over 500 donuts to all nine buildings. Always something that is just, we love doing. We love getting the feedback, something that we can just do to help out staff. The next thing that we'll be doing is our Hall of Fame inductees. So we haven't done it the last two years. I think it was 2022 since they did the last inductees. We've now inducted 50 people since the foundation has been created. But this year, on our last home game on October 24th, it is our plan to induct some new folks into our foundation Hall of Fame. We are changing the date of our dine outs. So we're moving that up from the first Thursday in December to the first Thursday in November because we will be having our staff charitable giving campaign in December. And we don't really want to try and advertise both of those things at the same time. So that's something that we're really, really looking forward to. That is the first time that we've ever done that. So it's just open to CCA staff. So I think that's something that makes it special that any CCA staff member starting on November 10th that goes and donates to the foundation, they will be entered in two drawings that we will do, one on December 9th and the other on December 16th, where we will give away great prizes from local sponsors that will be donating prizes to this event. Just a great way, I think, to give back to staff and something that is just especially for them. So all of the board of directors and myself are going to every business we can, asking for big item donations for our staff. But no matter what we get, we do know that the two biggest prizes will be our two personal days. We will do one of those on December 9th, the other on December 16th. Those personal days will be held under all of our personal day restrictions, when they can take them, when they can't. They must be taken in the 25, 26 school year. So we're very grateful to our superintendent to for supporting that because we know that will be a huge part of driving this fundraiser. Just a few other things that we are involved in in the next few weeks. One, our Meals for the Heartland, we'll be sponsoring that. That is a great event where our FFA goes over and they teach the fifth graders at East Ridge how to put together all these packages for folks. And it's just gonna be a great event. It's actually tomorrow, anyone gets a chance, stop over. It's gonna be a great event. I think they do it for two hours where they will package these things for families. Also, we are sponsoring Clippers Conservation Classroom. So the Old School of the Wild that we have sponsored for several years that cost us $7,500 a year to pay for. Huge shout out to East Ridge and Mr. Bulson for putting together a package that will now cost us around $500. So we are excited to sponsor that this year, and I think it's going to be even better. And so we're excited to be part of that. Also, we are sponsoring a free application for Federal Student Aid Event that will take place on October 30th, the high school, where all of our CCA families can sign up for a slot. And just CCA families will be helped through filling out all of these forms during that day. The slots are already almost full. So we're really excited to be part of that. So just a few things coming forward. Dates are Night of the Stars will be April 18th, our spring dine out will be May 7th, and our foundation golf outing will be June 11th. So with that, if anyone has any questions, I would love to answer. If not, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. And then we also have Mr. Daniel here to present updates from the high school. Thank you.
All right. So I thanks for the opportunity to present to you. It seems like we finished up last year, and now I'm kicking off this year. I promised there are no fish bones. I thought about throwing one in there just to be cute. But I decided maybe that wasn't as funny as.
Too soon.
But I did title my presentation Creating Experience That You Can't Get Anywhere Else. I believe that's why you hired me, is to help make CCA separate from other places. And so that's my mission to try to make sure that we are creating the best opportunity for students, staff, and the community, and that this is a place. and that this is a place that everybody wants to be a part of. So since the last time we met, if you remember, maybe you don't, we last year administratively were organized by grade levels. Our two APs, one had 11, 12, one had 9, 10. We have gone away with that structure and we've done it by tasks. So when you look up there on the screen, there's really two main reasons that I decided to go this route. One, I think you guys heard as much as I did in feedback, that our staff at the high school was looking for a dean-type position that they had previously. They wanted one person to be able to go to in terms of anything related to behavior. Rob fits that for us, he's done a good job this year. And then secondly, we need to tie all of our Kirkwood work-based learning, D cap stuff together under one umbrella. We have a lot of it going on, Ms. Amelon certainly takes up a bulk of that, that she had in the past. But in effort to try to take some of that off of her plate, in addition to all of the stuff that she's doing with FFA, with NHS, and with teaching her classes, we've designated Ben to help with that, and he's done a good job. So you're gonna see here, moving forward, some of the data that we have in terms of already the growth that we've already kind of had in terms of our job shadows. And all of that stuff is becoming increasingly important with, in terms of the school profile, or the report card, or whatever they're calling that. So we've got to do a much better job. So that is really the two main reasons why we did that. And then my job is to make sure that the vision that Mr. Davidson brought ties together with the building. Last year, I only really had one vision, and it was to build relationships. Well, this year, we're trying to push it forward a little bit, make that a little bit more comprehensive. So I put the expected benefits there so that you understand that when I sit back and reflect on last year, there is hopefully some, there's reasoning behind why we're making these changes. We're not just throwing stuff up against the wall.
Was it the staff who are wanting the more dean-type kind of person?
Yeah.
That was a staff request?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've, we've all taken, I've taken individual feedback as well as building feedback, and that was something that came up pretty consistently. If you have two people doing behavior, while we still have the Behavior Matrix, still, there's a little bit of gray, and it can still be interpreted a little bit differently, not a lot. But I think the other thing is, is it just gives one, you know, there's one contact person. You know, and, and sometimes the behavior is inter, you know, intertwined with a lot of other stuff. So to just say something is behaviorally rated, you know, that, that gets tough. So. Counseling changes, we also made a change here. So last year, we had Megan Carlo, who was only our ninth grade counselor. And then Dawn and Shannon split the rest of the alphabet. We believe we can utilize the strength of our counselors better by just dividing the alphabet three ways. Megan was certainly underutilized, I think you might got a little bit of preview of her skills. She put together graduation and did a great job, along with Dawn, who did senior awards. So we think that we can get more out of them, we just did some walkthroughs today, Mr. Davidson and I. And one of the things that I went and showed him is that our counselors are starting to push in and do some small group work with our at-risk students. So they're actually not just waiting for kids to come to the counseling office before we're trying to provide support. We're trying to bring that support to them and give them the skills they need to hopefully cope with better, with whatever they're experiencing at school. Like I said, my main goal last year was really building relationships. If you look at that top bracket, that is kind of where we're at when I started. And so then that bottom circle there just shows you that we were able to successfully, and I don't think that this is just me, a lot of this credit really goes to the staff and them buying into the longer-term vision. But we, we only have four new staff members. So we went from, I think, 17 or 18 last year to four, and two of those are people that transferred within the district. So Mr. McCumber would be one, and then we have another, another staff member that transferred in from Oco. And then actually, the other two that we have are, are not new faces. We only have one new face that came from a different district. So the ultimate goal behind me showing you this is I won't be happy until we close that circle and we just continue to have our staff return and we get those people that we are hiring, that we consider to be the experts in front of our kids year after year. So this is just kind of what, after reflection over the course of last year, those were my goal, or my priorities last year. I took the five goals that Aaron brought, you know, for the district this year, and that's the vision that I created. So my job, that I want our staff to be able to, you know, live on a daily basis, model on a daily basis, is that we're creating that supportive community where trust is an important factor for our staff and our students, and that we're opening doors and giving kids the opportunities that we think that we can present to them. I sum that up in that way, we're gonna create an opportunity that you can't get anywhere else. I just kind of put that, that's kind of easier for me to remember than trying to go through these fancy visions. But just having a vision, okay? I don't want it to just be a piece of paper, so I spent some time thinking about how are we going to achieve that? And I kind of branched culture out to mean more than just the staff. I know sometimes that that was a focus last year. But I do want there to be a focus on students and then also the community. So we've broken goals down for each one of those groups, and that we hope to, to make some gains there. And then those are the instructional priorities that I've outlined. We had to move our block from 82 to 87 minutes. A lot of that had to do with meeting the number of credit hours to get a credit. And then we also had to move, if you remember, we had to move the semester deadline back a little bit so that we're not ending before December. Those were all things that we had to do to accommodate the state. So with that 87 minutes, we're just trying to make sure that we're doing the best job we can, providing the support within that time for kids, and that we are using best practices to teach within that block. Okay? You see up there that PLC goal? I've been working with Christine to make sure that we are, that our departments are functioning as, as departments, that they're able to communicate, they're able to bring data back, that we're using formative assessments, which are just check-ins with kids to make sure that we aren't just given a tape, a test on a date, that we know where they're performing, that they should be ready for that. And then that, when these PLCs, these professional learning communities get together, what they do is they evaluate their data from each class so that they can kind of analyze their teaching practices, see what's going well, see what's not, make improvements and respond. The second way that we hope to achieve these goals is I've divided the staff, actually divided the BLT, our Building Leadership Team, and our staff into these three lighthouse teams. I want there to be a little bit more ownership on behalf of the staff. I don't want it to all be top-down coming from administration. So we have an academic team that meets, in fact, we met today, all of these groups met. They're meeting with our AEA consultant, Lynn Kleimeyer, to help, she's assisting us with best practices of teaching within the block, helping us set up our PLCs. Formative assessments, that's what that group is tasked for. I'm in charge of the culture group and checked in with them today, and they're kind of focusing right now in the short term on homecoming, since that's a big thing coming up there, but that's that goal. And then we have a special assignment group that, for things that are coming up, one of the things that we are gonna tackle, that we have to get a better handle on, is we're evaluating our master schedule for next year. We're just trying to make sure we're utilizing all of our FTEs, all of our resources, and is the block's schedule going to accommodate everything that we need to do to satisfy special ed, our electives, all of those things? So getting on that earlier so that we can evaluate all those options, that's largely what that group is, is doing there. Any questions so far? Student Support Services, this is an updated version from what you had, what you saw last year, similar slide just updated. And really, I put that on there is because we got to know which groups we've got to support, right? And each one of them is gonna require a different level of support. Our ELP kids, we've got to find extension activities so that we are continuing to push them and move them forward. Our ELL kids, our IEP kids, and at-risk, we just need to make sure, and one of the goals that we have, and I think we've been pretty good so far, and the goal is to make sure it's consistent, is we've been much more intentional about giving our at-risk, our student support team, time to be able to meet, evaluate the data, and then be able to respond. This is our District Developed Service Delivery Plan. A lot of times, and I think a lot of places, at least from where I'm from, this just exists on a piece of paper. But, you know, we hired a rock star special ed director, and she's kind of brought this to our staff. And what we're trying to do is make sure that our special ed services, the specially-designed instruction that we're providing for kids, falls somewhere within that continuum, right? Last year, we had Learning Strats, where that was a pull-out class, that would be at the far end on the right. And I don't think all of our kids necessarily needed that. In some cases, it was good, but some of our kids could meet, you know, their accommodations or their needs could be met earlier on in the continuum. So we're just making sure that we are matching what students need with the appropriate amount of support, and that's really what the slide shows. And then I put on a couple of things, I thought it was good for you just to know kind of the opportunities. I know that Kirkwood came up here last year. So there's a little bit of a reference from last year, and how many kids? And we've already got 298 kids in there in Kirkwood this year. So I'm assuming that that cost savings would probably be close to a half a million dollars. And that bottom number of 73 students, that's not even accurate. I put this slide together the day before it closes, so I think we're at 84 students that have signed up to do a job shadow. Credit to Mr. McCumber for taking that on, I think that's been an improvement from last year to this year. That's where we're at right now with our cell phone policy. I think that's, we're doing pretty well, to be honest with you. It's gone actually much better this year than even at the end of last year. I mean, our, our staff is doing a great job of being consistent, our students are using those phone holders. And really, consistency is just, that's the answer. And our kids have been, have responded well. Maybe Gretchen can give some insight when she presents too, to make sure she can fact-check me. And then here's just some ISAS scores. I'm gonna give you another handout, just because I think that this handout that I hear might be able to provide some additional context. Ultimately, our scores were relatively similar to the year before, is what you're gonna see here. With the exception, you know, that's ELA, there's math. And then we did have significant growth in the science tests that sophomores take. So that was a real achievement to get up to 81%, that was maybe a little bit unexpected. I've been asked by Mr. Moody in my meetings with him why he thinks that maybe that jump occurred. And two things that maybe stick out to me is, one, we tested in content areas. So for the other tests, we all, we did it through advisory, but in this case, we had science teachers giving that test, maybe that played into that. And then we also, we also tested them at the beginning and at the very end of testing. So I don't know if being the first test helped out on those scores. I'm guessing there was some fatigue as you go through all of those other tests, but testing upfront might have had something to do with that. And just, I'll give you this too, just so that you guys can have some additional context you want to give us. This just shows proficiency. So when you look at those scores, that just shows you, you know, that we're relatively stable, we didn't go back, we didn't show a lot of growth except for in science. But there shows you, you know, the number of kids that are proficient, and we're still doing relatively well compared to the state.
Just quickly on these with the graphs, the ninth, like so for, I guess you went back to ELA achievement.
I don't know, how do I go back to? Small button, no.
So this, like this blue ninth grade was ninth grade in 2024. And so if I want to look at where they're at in 10th grade, it'd actually be the red 10th grade, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So actually, that class actually went up.
Yep.
A little bit.
Yep.
Okay. And then maybe this isn't a question for you, but just in general, I'm always curious, because like you said, like 2%, what does that mean? What's that very, I mean, what's the variability in general? Is there ever a way that we actually look at if it's, the difference is significant? Like, we're having significant decrease or increase? Because I don't expect us to get the exact same score every year.
Yeah. I, you know, I don't know about in terms of decrease, I don't know if you can help with that. I will tell you that, that the, the science scores were something to celebrate.
That was definitely significant. But I think like sometimes we can get chipped up even on 2% drop in score, when it's like, that's actually probably just random noise.
Typically plus 3, minus 3 is flatline.
Percentage? Okay.
Anything above or below is either raise of celebration or concern?
Okay. So that's helpful to know, like a lot of these then too, we're just like kind of staying the same.
And just personally, I try to stay away from just coming up with the generical, like I want to increase our, our ISAS by 3%. Obviously, that's the goal, but I feel like if we're not doing all those little things in terms of getting our lighthouse teams and our PLC and our formative assessment, focusing on those best practices, and when we get all those things aligned, I think you'll see those results, they'll come. If I just focus on the backend and then we're not doing all the things in between, being intentional about that, I'm not sure we'll see that success, so.
Do others have questions?
Questions? I think, last time, either Mr. Fox or you were here, we kind of talked about the bridge between ninth, eighth and ninth grade, where some of the score kind of dropped and then kind of picked back up. I think we talked about maybe trying to come up with like a ways to integrate them early so they don't get that high school shock when they come in and scores tend to drop. Can you speak of any initiatives you guys are thinking about taking for that?
Yeah, so during Zero Day, we did have, so we have, I don't know what the exact number is, but we have, we have more kids that are taking high school classes than we did last year. So we included them on Zero Day. I think that number might have been from like maybe four or five, like we have maybe eight or nine, 10 kids that are coming up and taking a class. Typically, they're accelerated in math and science. But yeah, no, those are conversations that we're still having between Mr. Fox and I to make sure that we aren't waiting till they get to high school before we say, hey, come figure this out. One of the things that we did at the end of last year is, one of our students took the initiative to go down to the middle school to start introducing the clubs and activities that we have, to try to give them a preview of what they could sign up. We followed up on that during Zero Day, and we had what we called a club rush, we tried that for the first time. So in addition to getting their computer and walking through the schedule, one of the things that they did is we had all of our clubs and activities in the gym, and they had an opportunity to try to get connected right away with some of the stuff, some of the activities to help, you know, give them a connection to the high school. But that, that will always be, that, that's an every-year thing. We, we can always improve and get better at that.
Anything else, Pernia? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Alright, we'll move into our reports then, and we're gonna start with our Student Representative Report. Gretchen, we'll go ahead and let you have the floor.
I'm just gonna talk a little bit about like some changes at the high school, and then also some things that like our students are looking forward to and stuff. So right now, our full sports and activities are in full swing, and volleyball's ranked number one. Our football team's also doing pretty good this year with a 2-1-2 record. And then cross-country and swimming are also going on right now and doing well. And then one thing that most students are probably looking forward to is next week is homecoming. So Student Council's in charge of planning our homecoming, and that includes like the dress-up days, the pep rally that will have this Friday and next Friday, the parade, and then the actual dance, which is on Saturday, October 4th. And then on Thursday night of homecoming week, following the parade, we're going to announce the homecoming court, the king and queen. And then a change from last year is our powder puff game is also gonna be after the parade this year, where as in years past, it was just during our advisory time. So that's exciting, because it'll be structured and longer, and I think students will like enjoy that more. And then like Mr. Daniels was saying, that the club rush took place on Zero Day. And this was just mostly to try to get more students involved quicker and just let them know about everything that the high school offers, that maybe the middle school doesn't. Something I attended recently on September 16th was the Tiffin Rec Center Groundbreaking Event. I, me, and then also some other kids from the high school and middle school and elementary went. So that was pretty fun, just to see like everybody, different ages, and like different schools come together. And we were all excited about this being built and getting to use it. And then also, like Mr. Daniel said, the cell phone policy that was put in place at the end of school last year is still in place. And so far, hasn't been a lot of pushback, and it ultimately just results in less distractions in the classroom. And I think, I personally think it's a good thing, just to, because I know that for me, my cell phone can be a distraction. So just like working on my homework and not having the temptation to get on it has been good. And then overall, I'd just say the school year is going pretty well so far, and students are enjoying tennis sporting events, clubs, looking forward to homecoming, just a lot of things coming up that's exciting. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Gretchen?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Are you on Student Council? Did you get voted for this seat, or how did that process take place?
Yeah, I do do Student Council, I don't have like a leadership role in that, but I do that. And then how I got this. And then how I got this school board representative is anybody could put like their name on the ballot for, like for our school, and then all the students voted on it, so.
And I was asking, I didn't think I heard it, and I'm not as familiar with high schoolers, sorry. What year are you?
A senior.
A senior, okay. Oh, so you can only get you for one year. Okay. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Maury is here, yes, he is here. We're going to segue into building projects update.
All right, going to start out the same way I have for the last year and a half. East Ridge Elementary. We, we actually had a meeting this last week, or last week, with Shive Harry to discuss the final closeout items. So since then, I have gotten a response from Knutson. They are actively working on completing the changes as requested by Shive, and any items that we have on their list to complete. So they, they are working towards the final closeout of the project. They do continue to respond with any warranty items as well, so that is positive, considering that they are now fully out of state. So any questions on East Ridge? Okay. The baseball softball complex, the first phase. I received the final closeout documents today, actually, from Knutson. So we're getting closer there. I'll start reviewing those. And if there's any changes with those, I'll get those back to them and hopefully get those turned around pretty quick. So up to this point, that process has gone, gone rather smoothly. Any questions on that part of the project? Okay. Phase two, we've got a lot more activity going on down there now. We've got our, our foundations are in, the underground electrical has been run. The underground plumbing is currently being worked on. We're scheduled to finish that up tomorrow. And the irrigation to the practice softball field has been completed, and we have been running that. So that's where we're at right now. The masons are, are scheduled to continually lay in block next week, providing the other trades stay on, on task. So any questions on the second phase so far? Okay. The pre-K playground at CCE has been, been completed, and we've done a walkthrough and we conducted our punch list. There are a few items they needed correct, so we are working with the team to get those taken care of. Any questions on that? All right. Oak Hill Elementary Playground, the equipment is currently being installed, and hopefully they are able to complete that portion of it this week, and then the safety surface will follow right after. Any questions there? On to the high school and middle school additions. We completed, and Tan, you can, a lot of meetings today. And can you continue to have those meetings with our internal teams for the design development phase? And we're making progress there. I feel that our teams have given very good information and feedback. And I, I think we're progressing there, and I feel that's going to continue. Everybody's been very positive with what they've been bringing to the table. Any questions on, on those two projects? Then finally, the park road construction, open north and south, access to, to everything. All the feedback I've gotten, it's going smoothly right now. So that's how we'll sit until they start construction back up next spring. There.
Will we still be in the school year when they start back up?
They will. If they have any closures, they'll have to schedule that with us and make sure that we have access. So the, the main closure to Oak Hill on the north end, they want to schedule that during the summer. But we'll see what their revamp schedule is like when they come out in the spring.
Well, that's good. I was thinking it was going to be closed like all year for some reason. Yeah, didn't we get told that?
They.
They made it.
Yeah. Well, they did, from their initial schedule at the very beginning of last March, they did revamp it a little bit, and they changed their phasing to where they're able to accommodate what we have now.
Yeah, that's way better.
I was like, did I just really misunderstand or like, oh, okay. Okay.
Question about the warranty, real quick. Can you remind me how long and what? Basically, what I'm getting at is the practice field. Have we resolved all of the issues with that? Is the warranty covering any of that? Water sitting on fields when it rains, is that stuff we need to keep an eye on, or is that stuff that we're going to mitigate?
Yeah.
Internally, or is that warranty worth it at all?
Yeah, so on the, the practice field, we don't have any subdrain there. It does drain in just as far as warranty items around the area, the, for example, fencing, the infield, we've, we accepted the infield right away. So yeah, they, there would be warranty items. The way it drains is just, it's going to be based on surface drainage.
It has nothing to do with the warranty.
That doesn't have anything to do with the warranty. It's just going to, that will drain a little bit slower than the other fields, simply because we don't have a subdrain system under it. Yep. Anything else?
Thank you. All right, Mr. Davidson.
All right.
Kind of report.
So super excited about the first one. Iowa School Performance Profiles just came out. Hopefully you had a chance to look at my Friday update with Link. I think a lot to celebrate. We're actually, I'm working with Lori and communication on what that could potentially look like going out. We are in a place a lot different than other districts in the state, so we have some things to definitely celebrate. I put on here just so you'd have an idea of the rating, so it goes from exceptional down to needs improvement. Of course, it's always exciting. You never want to have some needs improvement. We can talk about like some comparisons. If you had a chance to go back from last year to this year, I don't know how much, as a board, you were, this came up as discussion. Couple highlights outside of the data I have in front of you is just, anytime you're sitting at 80% proficiency, not that 80% is the magic number. The goal should always be 100. But in, in the world of education, that 80% is kind of that target. And then once you get there, try to continue to try to improve it. And things to pull out from the 24 to 25 data, so for the past two years, looking at in ELA, 80.36, 80.36% proficient, that is fantastic. And that's up nearly three points from the 2024 year. There's also specific to math, again, so you typically highlight ELA and math. And last year, student achievement score as far as the student school performance profile, they were at 76.18, up to 78.57. So again, over 2% growth, so we're nearing that 80% mark and that threshold, which is super exciting. Definitely trending in the right direction. And probably most to be excited about is science. So from, from 2024 to 2025, last year, it was 65.17% proficient, all the way up to 77.74% proficient. I think a lot of that, that credit needs to go to a variety of people. Our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, of course, Christine does a great job. And then our building leaders and our teachers, of course, and kids putting in the work, doing their best in those assessments. That's probably one of the biggest challenges you see across the state, is just kids really caring about their scores and making sure these scores represent not only themselves, their families, but the school district and the community as a whole. So a lot to celebrate. I just wanted, there's some other information I could give. I mean, there's, there's some really exciting growth that we've seen in some subgroups. We're trending in the right direction. So that, that is positive. And as, as a board member, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Okay. Next up, I wanted to give an update. I've kind of referenced it in my Friday updates, but the Facilities Master Planning Committee, we had our first meeting. It was a long meeting. It was three hours. People came with energy. We had a cooler full of ice. I should have brought Red Bull. That three hours on the road, it was, it was long, and it was, it was great though. We had notebooks where they were able to take notes. We encouraged people to take pictures, because we have like over a month, our first meeting was, was it last Wednesday, Lori? And then we don't meet again for our second meeting until the end of October. So there's a little bit of gap there, and we made it all the way through the order. We, we didn't make it to the preschool, and we didn't make it to the middle school, high school. So when we get to October 30th, it's, we're going to start at the middle school. We're going to go to the high school, and then we're just going to walk over to the preschool. And at that meeting, we will kind of start hashing out and brainstorming how the tours went, some kind of trends and some priorities, just initial conversations from those first couple building walkthroughs. So it was, it was a great start. People were excited. People were definitely willing to give feedback, and that's exactly what we want. So it was a great first meeting, and that's always a positive start. So looking forward to the outcomes, and I'll continue to keep the board up to date. The next one is, we've had our affiliate group yearly meetings. I think that's important to note. It's, it's been a couple of years since we've had those meetings. Met with the fame group boosters and foundation last Wednesday. And then last night, we were able to meet with the PTGs. Great conversations, a lot of questions, and that's exactly what we wanted. We sat around the table. Laura did a great job of updating our affiliate handbook, which hadn't been updated in a couple of years, sent it out prior. So all of the affiliate group members and building principals had a chance to look it over beforehand. That was probably the most important. So people come with questions. There were questions, and that's healthy. And a lot of, why are we doing it this way? Why, why are the updates looking like this? The most important part is I wanted those groups to know they were appreciated and valued. And most importantly, we were able to talk about how as a district, we have systems in place for a reason. We want to encourage them to be involved. We know time is precious. So all of the time of all of our affiliate groups is more than appreciated, specific to our schools. We just want processes in place, clear as kind. And so unless we have that meeting, people aren't, they're not going to be aware of the expectations. And so I thought they were two very good meetings. We got out in less than an hour for both, so I would call that a good meeting. Any, any questions on any of those three big, big hitters? Okay.
Great. All right, we'll turn it over to you, Lori, for the finance report.
So I included in the packet the unspent authorized budget report as of, updated through the filing of the CAR on September 15th. As you can see, we do end with a positive UAB.
You don't see it.
It's not attached in here, Lori.
You don't see it. Oh, good.
I can pass it around.
Can I have you just project this up on the screen quick? Would that be the quickest way? Sorry.
Do I run copies for you? I'll go run some.
He's going to run copies too, so people can have it up close.
Absolutely, because it's a lot of numbers on that little page. Pretty hard to read from my old eyes.
Are we going to the SBRC?
Can you maybe just, we fold up a little bit and focus on like the last two columns and the, towards the bottom, like right hand corner? Yeah, right there. Up a little more. There we go. Shows that the positive balance there at the bottom.
Positive balance, that's what I heard.
Positive balance, yes, that's what you heard. So the numbers in the blue, the first one is the SBRC that we've requested for opening East Ridge. The next one down is SBRC numbers for our increasing enrollment. So they give us the authority for that from our increasing enrollment of October 24, just not the cash, okay? The 1,008 is our special ed deficit. And then as you go down through there, of course, you can see in the next blue box, that is our miscellaneous revenue the prior year, yet moves forward, thank you, Kell, in the 607. And then so in the green is what our total spending authority was. The blue is what our expenditures were leaving as the balance of 224, 356. So now, after that's all been filed, this will go to frontline for, to help develop our forecasting models. And I, and we're working, I should have that available so we can do a deeper dive next week on the first for the work session. So the good news is that that is a positive number for our UAB. We do not have to appear before the SBRC.
Yeah. I was getting really nervous because I hadn't heard anything. Yeah. What's our, do you know our ratio then? Like less than one?
Yeah, probably.
Okay. Just so we can buy it, okay?
There were a couple differences that came up that weren't anticipated.
We'll have additional presentation for you, so we'll have that, our solvency ratio and all of those things put together in a nice little package, okay?
Great. Thank you for, I know it's been a lot of work on the financial end. Thank you, Lori, for making sure we kept where we need to be. All right, any questions for Lori? Okay. We'll go to board report. I was thinking through, so I don't think anybody here attended the facilities committee, planning committee that you had anyway. We already talked about it. I haven't had a library meeting. Have you had a library meeting?
I was there last night. Not enough people for a quorum, so.
That's the first time you've got to go to one. Okay, foundation?
Mr. Parker pretty much.
Pre-ment, okay. We haven't had pepel. We talked about policy at the work session. SiAC hasn't started, it's on table.
Whether it's now or in later in the meeting, next steps, I wasn't able to respond to the email about homecoming float.
Oh.
So I can come.
Awesome.
Are we doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
We're making sure we have enough.
We have four, yes, so we're going to.
Yeah.
Steve will, yep, Steve will pull us, you behind his tractor, just like we have in past years. And Lori's ordered new banners with new names.
Can't throw candy.
And it's no candy, is that the?
Yeah.
Unless you're walking.
Unless you're walking.
Right.
If you're walking, you can do it. And we still encourage a nice gentle underhand toss.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
I think they threw most of it just on the street and the kids scooped it up.
Yeah. Yeah, like throw it, just like when you're doing a throw-in during soccer, look at their feet. Aim for their feet. Okay, so we talked about that. I have my little list of things we have to talk about. But yeah, we will do a float. I'm not able to attend the float, the parade, so. But we will have a float.
I'm excited to see the parade. See you guys on the float. I'm excited to see it, so.
Yeah.
Steve was excited that we asked him again. He loves to do it, yeah.
Anything else for board report, any meetings I'm not thinking of?
Did I miss the SiAC? Is that going to be the same as the roundtable representatives, or we don't need to attend that, or?
They're separate.
Okay.
So roundtable will be very similar in a lot of ways to last year's roundtable. It's a set a little bit different.
I can talk to it if you'd like.
Yeah.
And I can, so the superintendent, we're going to, it's different, of course. It's more of, we're going to base it off of how, so our first one is Monday. Time is different. It's four to five. It is a general, it's, it's, we're basically highlighting our district goals. And I'm going to give a synopsis to start. I'm excited about putting some other directors in some leadership roles. I think it helps people have an understanding of what our directors are doing. I think that's really important. And so they're going to have some talking points specific to our district goals. Our goal is to give about a 30, no, no longer than a 40-minute presentation, and we're going to work off of a slide deck. Most importantly, we want people to be able to ask plenty of questions. And there may be questions that they have, not even based on what we've presented, and that's the whole goal. If I find that it's trending in a certain direction and things we're presenting on aren't what people want to talk about, I will adjust as we move on. So that, that is our superintendent roundtable. Where SiAC, it's based on, there's, there's certain components we have to present on.
What do you mean, like board, like board representation? Do you want that at each one, or are we going to have board representation at each one?
We have, we had in the past.
Roundtable, and we had it at SiAC.
We had it.
And we had SiAC.
We had people who for sure went or represented, but anybody was welcome to come.
Timing may make it hard.
Board members to those committees? Are we going to just, who can go, can go? We don't want to have a quorum?
I would love to have a representation there, but I also, like superintendent roundtable, when I adjust the time to four, that may make it challenging. And so I think that's important to note, where SiAC is going to be 5:30 to 6:30. Maybe we can talk about it in board leadership and something else.
We always had three on SiAC, right, when we first started?
I think it was two, but three people wanted to go.
I mean, I always brought up around the board, it's your guys' decision or somebody's decision, but, I mean, when we did the SiAC last time, nobody was there. How are you going to make it to people?
Nobody attended?
Oh, yeah.
We had a lot of members, but.
It was teachers, and then nobody from the community, nobody.
We have, we have a group that's signed up and they had to apply.
I was curious, like this is news to me, like, I mean, I saw it in a report, but the last three years, I guess we were involved in committees and doing committees, and now we're not, so.
Did they have to like kind of apply?
They did.
That might help with like the commitment?
We would, we would hope. I don't know how it was done in the past. When I visited with Lori, we wanted Avenue to be able to get a wide spectrum. So when we sent out, specifically for SiAC, we want, we want the entire district ideally covered.
We applied in the past, and then we started out strong and then kind of dwindled as the year went on. But I guess, I was under the impression that you had to have two more members at the SiAC.
That is not, if, if, no, there's no guidance that's there. That is not, if, no, there's no guidance that states that.
So this was Mr. Davidson's recommendation because our previous roundtable wasn't fulfilling the legislative requirements of SiAC. And, but he wanted to still honor, he asked if he should still have a roundtable. And we said yes, that our communities have come accustomed to that and having that format. And we thought it would not be wise to take away the roundtable, which.
But you don't need us at either one unless we want to come, is what I'm.
No, I think it's important to know you're invited. I would love to, I think it'd be awesome to see board members attend. But it's not something that I would say that has to be done.
And, yeah, I think we've, you know, we've kind of waxed and waned on committees because we've added P E P L back. And then, but then we've, you know, now there's not a superintendent roundtable that people are officially going to. And so firming up our committees and what we want for board roles will be, it is a good point that you guys bring up of like, what, do we want at least two people at this? Is it always the same, too? Are we just gonna say, try to make sure two board members are there so we can fill each other in, that sort of thing? But I do know that with only seven of us, and a lack of interest in the community for some positions, being aware of like how many committees we're on has been something at the forefront of my mind because there's only seven of us. And if we all have to do four or five committees, that's like every night of the week sometimes. So be more flexible, I hope, is helpful for people with their work-life school board balance.
And I'll be sure to communicate. I mean, I'll, yes, yep. I'll just wait till the Friday update and I, no, link it in the slide deck, what we presented with some notes. Can do the same with all of our committee meetings, so.
I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm planning on going to both meetings.
The roundtable is a traveling roundtable, so we're gonna, I mean.
Yeah, each one of our tenants enters throughout the year. Starting in our first month in a manna.
Yep. That was the whole intent. Again, I'm gonna get feedback, because that's a little bit different. Two goals there. One was to get staff in those buildings, so that if you do it at four o'clock, you give them a chance to attend, to get staff voice. It also gives people from all across our district a chance to go if they're available.
And I do think that we'll be flexible, too. If what we see is like staff is the only people attending, then I'm sure we'll talk about moving it to back to a later time so that we do have community coming as well.
Yep.
We've also had intros in the passive staff asking for like a town hall at 7:30 in the morning just to have board members come and, which they've done in the past. So that might kind of scratch that itch, too, you know?
Yes.
But if it turns into that, maybe we could go to a town hall.
Of course. A lot of different options we have. It's early enough. Again, we'll just get through the first couple and get feedback and make adjustments as needed.
Other things for board report?
I don't know if you were planning on talking about it or not, but just kind of the overview or game plan of the election coming up and the seats and running and what kind of is the trajectory and targets that we're gonna go for.
Yes, we can certainly discuss that. I was gonna do it later in discussion, but we can do it now if you want.
Whenever. I just wanted to make sure we got it in and didn't know where it was going.
That and as well as the conference for discussion. Okay, let's move into action items then. Up first is item A, approving the consulting agreement with John Spear. The recommendation is to approve the consulting agreement with John Spear to facilitate the facilities master planning committee.
And I admit, if you, if you looked at this earlier and you're like, hey, the summary, I didn't see that summary. I had it in minutes. So I moved it over. It was in minutes all the time. So if you didn't remember, call scene, that's what took place, rookie era assembly. Just wanted to pull out all the things John was, again, as we're co-facilitating some things. And I pulled that off, actually, the presentation. That was what drove kind of his work and what our work together would look like. Just, that shouldn't be new to you, anything he's doing. That was part of his presentation to the board before I started in June.
Great. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B is approving facilities master planning committee. The recommendation is to approve the facilities master planning committee as it's submitted here. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions or discussion here? They'd have one quick question for you, Mr. Davidson. Could you at some point, or somebody, update this with kind of what role or what building or just like, so I can see a breakdown of who's attending, who's on the committee? Like if it's a community member versus?
Most definitely.
It was a little smaller group than I know we kind of targeted.
It was.
Yeah, so I was.
It was 19. That's what we ended up rolling with then.
Yeah, so I was just curious kind of where they, where they came from.
That's good. I can get that. I'll put that in my Friday update.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, discussion here? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C is to approve the reconsideration committee. The recommendation is to approve the reconsideration committee as it's submitted here. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or discussion here?
We had a lot of people.
Did we?
I think it's good they know they potentially don't, won't have to meet.
I just wanted to reiterate, the policy does state, though, that even though the committee comes to a decision, you have final say, correct?
Yep. And I will make sure if we get to a point, I will make, I'll be communicating with the board and kind of what those steps would be.
See my vet on there. That's funny. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D is to approve the teacher quality or T Q committee. The recommendation is to approve the teacher quality committee as it's submitted here. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Questions or discussion here?
Same thing with this, if you can note who they are, where they're from.
Okay, will do.
They're attached.
But like what building?
Yeah, what, just the.
We have like representation. This is voluntary.
T Q? Yeah, they had to sign up.
You had to sign up, do we, but we, last year, I remember, we tried to make sure to have one person from every building. I'm kind of assuming the same thing.
It is. You want representation, and you want representation ideally from, ideally you have like a special ed staff member who have a tag. I mean, it's easier said than done at times, but just try to get a wide representation.
Okay. Anything else here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E is to approve the school improvement advisory committee or SiAC. The recommendation is to approve the school improvement advisory committee as it's submitted here. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, approve out-of-state charter request for FFA National Convention. The recommendation is to approve the out-of-state charter request for the FFA Group to attend the FFA National Convention. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion? I believe it's happening in Indiana. Maybe they'll seek Caitlin Clark.
They're lucky.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item G, approve proposal request for the baseball softball Phase Two. The recommendation is to approve change order number one in the amount of $6,738.57. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Questions or discussion here?
Was this something that we couldn't have known about beforehand, or this just came about how?
Maury, how did this process start? When you, when you, we talked?
Yeah, we had, so we had the design done for the improvements over at the existing field. And then it just, since it does have to cross the city right of way, we had communication with them, and they, they suggested and offered up that we tie into one of their storm sewer structures to make it cleaner and function better. And that wasn't something that we thought we would be able to do. But they, when they offered it up, we asked for pricing on it to see what it would cost. And it would just improve the site overall, and, and they would prefer it be this way as well.
Other questions, discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H is to approve engagement agreement with the France Law Group. The recommendation is to approve the engagement agreement with France Law Group as discussed with legal counsel. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions or discussion here?
Can we get a brief synopsis of this? I know you've talked about it a little bit.
Yeah, so I'll kind of piggyback off the background. So again, I wasn't here at the point, but there was a data breach. It impacted their entire system. So in essence, not only students but staff, if we had, districts use it a little bit different. Fast forward to when it got, when it got publicized. Of course, there were lawsuits starting to pop up. This is coming out as they're recommending school districts take a different approach instead of being by themselves, kind of be lumped in. And basically what the, if you looked at the agreement, is saying that is there's no cost out of pocket to the district unless we would be awarded some type of financial allocation. And then there would be a 30, I think it's 30%, if I recall, in a couple days since I've been in it. But that's to protect us. So once this gets out, if a family, it'd be a student that graduated, could be a family, could be a former staff member, it could be a variety of things. If they wanted to come after, if there was a lawsuit based on suing the district for not keeping their data secured, we'd be able to come back off this lawsuit and be able to collect money back. Hopefully, it's not the case. But I was under the assumption, at first, it was a couple of years, but it happened recently, last January. So there's a lot that's played out across the country. Been on a couple Zooms and listened to the lawyers, not only from the France Law Group, but also all ours, discuss this. So most, most districts in the state that are impacted are doing the same thing you guys are.
Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I is approve naming of campus road. Recommendation is to approve the name of that campus road as West Third Street per the city's recommendation.
Motion.
Okay, perfect. Great job, guys. Any questions or discussion here? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item J is to accept the 2425 certified annual report. Recommendation is to accept the 2425 certified annual report as filed with the Department of Education. Motion?
Motion.
Questions or discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item K, accept the 2425 annual transportation report. Recommendation is to accept the 2425 annual transportation report as filed with the Department of Education. Do I have a motion?
So. Second.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item L, accept the 2425 special education supplement. The recommendation is to accept the 2425 special education supplement as filed with the Department of Education.
Motion. Second.
Questions or discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item M, so approve the S B R C requests for modified allowable growth and supplemental aid special ed deficit. The recommendation is to approve the request for the modified allowable growth and supplemental aid for the sped deficit in the amount of $1,853,775.18. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Questions or discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item N is to approve board policy review. Recommendation is to approve the following board policy reviews as discussed by the board and policy committee. 103, long range needs assessment. 106, policy series. 80801, building insights, long range planning. 80102, building and site surveys. 80103, educational specifications for buildings and sites. 80104, site acquisition. 80105, bids and awards for construction contracts. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or additional discussion here? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item O is to approve board policy review. The recommendation is to approve policy, I'm sorry, board policy revisions. So there we go. Approve board policy revisions as recommended by the policy committee and work sessions, discussions. And this would be for policy 10601 Title IX Discrimination and Harassment Based on Sex Prohibited, 207, board directors, legal counsel, and 800 objectives of buildings and sites. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto item P, to approve the consent items. Do I have a motion to approve consent items?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion? Thank you for the gifts and donations. Anything else here? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, so we'll move into our discussion items. First up, we will go through next meetings. So next week on Wednesday, we have our policy committee. It's on October 1st. It's slated to start at 5:30. But I did hear you wanted maybe add something. Do you think 5:30 is still good?
5:15.
5:15?
Just some concerns that I had about the fundraiser. People have kind of been talking about fundraisers. Mila might have had some issues today. 5:15?
5:15?
Can you do that?
Yeah. Lori or Mr. Davidson, can you guys update Sarah on that, please?
Yep.
She is out of the district on this day, so I'll fix it in simply. She sent falsies, didn't she? Already send them out, or did she?
She just said that we're starting at 5:30. I don't think she attached anything.
Uh-uh.
I'll email her. I'll look up what numbers maybe to put on.
Let me look and see if she's got it out there. She just hasn't sent it, maybe.
And then following that, we'll have the work session starting at 6:00. Oh, I just noticed that in here is Monday, though, first, at 4:00 is the first superintendent roundtable. Correct?
The, yes, this upcoming Monday.
This upcoming Monday.
Yep.
Okay, so that is September 29th.
That's correct.
Four to five at a manna elementary.
At a manna elementary.
And policy committee here, 5:15 on Wednesday, 5:15 to 6:00, followed by work session, 6:00 till, I won't say a time.
Seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say seven. And then.
Yes.
Our first SiAC meeting will be.
5:30 to 6:30.
Okay, that's 5:30 to 6:30 on October 13th at the high school.
SiAC are always gonna be at the high school.
That's what I had. Okay. And then our board means October 15th. So we've got quite a few things coming up in the next couple of weeks. And that doesn't even count homecoming, parade festivities, and all of that. So talking points, the things that I had written down were the float, which we took care of.
I'm meeting at 5:30 for that, to get on the float.
5:30?
That's when lineups starts, yeah.
Okay, in that field.
By the dark arcs.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And then want to touch base about the I A S B conference. So Lori had, there's a block of rooms. If people who are wanting to attend wanted to stay there a night or two, she can block those without, and then we can cancel them. But just wanted to get a gauge on who wants to go for sure. I plan on going.
I'll pass.
You're gonna pass this year? Okay. I was planning on going at least, I think, Thursday, Friday. I need to look at my schedule Wednesday, I'm in Cleveland, but. You planning on going?
It was just Thursday.
Okay. Okay, thoughts?
I'm looking at the dates and see what I got.
Okay.
I hope to go at least a day for sure.
The legislative thing on Wednesday?
Yeah, the delegate thing.
Yeah, are you, you're still a representative or?
I'm still the delegate, yeah. You don't have to send somebody, but also if we have our organizational meeting like right before that, and somebody else wants to be the delegate, you could do it after a month.
Yeah, I was planning on going, too, at least for one day, but gotta look at my schedule and see if I, if I'm gonna stay or if I'm just gonna drive back and forth.
Okay. So I guess, what's in our email?
Well, we also have to hold till after the election if new board members also want to go.
They can register there, though.
Oh, they do have a, what do you call it, like a little flexibility for new?
They do, yeah. But if we find out they want to go, they're, they're gonna open up registration again for a little block of time following the election for folks to register.
So, so maybe it's not an email just to confirm with us four. So, so maybe send an email just to confirm with us four. Then that brings me to the other topic, which is the election. So we do have two individuals on the ballot for that large. And then Nick on for District Three, but we didn't get any paperwork for District Four or District Two. So currently, the strategy is we're still reaching out, because we want to find people who are interested and want to do it. We don't wanna force anybody into anything. And that it, you know, we, we've talked about this Monday, it could be write-ins, if there's somebody who's interested. I feel like it's not gonna be a big turnout for this vote.
Is there thoughts of like putting it out in the newsletter again to let people know that there's still spots?
Yeah, I think we should push it out probably in the newsletter, like, there's still spots. That doesn't mean that you can't run for it. And we did follow up with a few people who kind of last minute came out of the woodwork, and they have since changed their mind and decided they don't want to.
Yeah, thanks, I mean, there's talk with building leaders to reach out to parents that are usually involved in building activities. And a few principal provided names and phone numbers, and we've reached out to them. I've reached out to at least three, four, chatted back and forth, and at the end it was like, no, no, not right now.
Have we reached out to the affiliate groups? Because I feel like those are the people that are already volunteering.
Yep, the PTGs tried to get.
Booster clubs.
Yep.
Like, nothing from any of those?
I mean, with the posting that we've done on social media a couple times and the, what do you call it, the informational meeting that we've scheduled at three attendance centers, none of it was attended by anybody. Tried, but again, I think it's a good idea with the, now that the filing period is gone, now we can put out some communication, what are the next step or what are the options, right? So you can still do a write-in.
What do, what's the kind of plan?
Yep.
Yeah.
If you don't get write-ins, then becomes appointed, and if you get appointed, it's for a short term till you have to run for another, you know, putting all that information out so people know what's going on.
And we're still during the forum.
Since we got three people listed, yeah.
So if they wanna, if someone just comes out of the woodwork and says, I wanna be a write-in, can they do the forum or we have to exclude them because they're not on the ballot?
I think we talked about the forums.
What if like two people for the same district want to?
We said they could do a, for, they could be part of the forum. Yeah.
I think last forum was pretty crowded. We were, we might have been limited with time, but I mean, that's not a reason not to include anybody. But yeah, if, I think the date is still what, October twenty-ninth? On the calendar, yeah, if anybody decides to do a write-in.
And they would be then like running on write-in basis and lobbying for themselves at the forum to write me in and.
Yep.
Right, okay. Which like, if like, three people write them in and nobody else gets written in, like, then they get, right? It's just like.
But they have to want it. Like you can't just write in your neighbor and.
No, then they, anybody who's written in, they have a chance to say no afterwards, yeah. No, so we can't just write you back in.
I'm onto this plan. Just checking. I'm too far, I don't need to do that.
Yeah, so, so right now the plan is just to try to keep gauging people, you know, it was, it's six weeks out, six or seven weeks out from the election, so trying to get interest. Talking to people, and then after that, if we still don't really have anybody, then it'll go to asking for people to volunteer for an appointment, which we've had success with in the past. So, you know, if there's a real, me. And I think, yeah, it's not an ideal, I do, I think it says a lot about what the board as a whole and what especially you three have done for the district in the last four years. I think people see what the time it takes and the dedication, so I think it is a testament to your hard work as well. And I feel like we can say with confidence that hopefully that level of work and time intensive work isn't necessary in the future, so. People don't be afraid. We have fun. Those are my talking points. Anything for anybody else? Okay, who wants to do the honors?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thanks.